Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock on Monday, June 2nd, 2025, and we will call this Sioux-St. Marie City Commission meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Here.
Commissioner Habusta.
Here.
Commissioner Marble.
Here.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Talentino.
Here.
All present, thank you. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody. We'll move on into Item C, which is Public Comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments on our regularly scheduled agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on into Item D, which is the Consent Agenda. Deputy City Manager Troyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the Consent Agenda, one, approval of the City Commission meeting minutes of May 19th, 2025; Item two, acceptance of the Sioux-St. Marie Housing Commission meeting minutes of March 20th and April 17th; Item three, acceptance of the Historical Development Commission meeting minutes of February 18th; Item four, acceptance of the Police and Fire Pension Board meeting minutes of April 16th; Item five is reappointment of Craig Cooper and Ray Bell to the Downtown Development Authority; Item six is confirmation of mayoral appointment of Derek Knight to the Planning Commission; Item seven is appointment of Bridget Aker to the Sioux-St. Marie Housing Commission; Item eight is consideration of bid award for purchase of asphalt emulsion for spray patching; Item nine is consideration of bid award for the purchase of liquid calcium chloride for dust control on gravel roads and parking lots; Item 10 is consideration of bid award for the purchase of maintenance materials for fiscal year 2025-26; Item 11 is consideration of public hearing for obsolete property rehabilitation act request for 538 Ashman Street; Item 12 is consideration of smart zone lease agreement with Gate House Media Michigan Holdings, Inc. And item 13 is approval of the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Thank you very much. Deputy City Manager, would anybody like any of these items further explained or removed for individual consideration? Seeing none, Commissioner Bauer.
So moved that we approve tonight's Consent Agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda is passed on unanimous vote. Move right down into Item G, Business Items. Number one, City Manager Chapman.
Name, Mr. Mayor. Up first for Commission Considerations is a request to approve a bid for some storm manhole repairs of the Holiday Inn parking lot. Kind of long story short, we had infrastructure in this area prior to the Holiday Inn. The Holiday Inn built on top of it. In the area is about six manhole covers. The issue is that the parking lot has sagged down a little bit, so the manholes are sticking up a considerable amount. The Holiday Inn reached out to us because they have a contractor coming in to redo their parking lot. This request is to kind of piggyback off of that work and make our manholes in line or level with the parking lot. So, three motions with this one. Motion to waive the competitive bid process as we're piggybacking off of the Holiday Inn bid; motion to award the repairs Picture Perfect Asphalt for $14,000; and motion to establish a budget and $14,000 from the general fund. For stormwater repairs, general fund is the only funding source we have currently for stormwater repairs. And in talking to staff with this bid, this is in line with what we would expect for the cost of this. Probably a little bit less because we're not necessarily paying for the mobilization. So, three motion. Motion to waive the competitive bid process, motion to award the repairs, and motion to establish budget.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions, comments on this item? Commissioner Habusta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions on this item. First of all, in the statement that I want to give, first of all, I think, you know, and I mentioned this last week, or last meeting, excuse me, that I'm very concerned about the number of waiving, number of opportunities we've had to waive the competitive bid process. I feel like this past year, we've waived as many things as we've bidded out, and I think that's concerning. I think the competitive bid process is there for a reason, and we need to be aware of that. That said, in this item, I certainly understand that there's an opportunity to perhaps get a better price. I guess my questions revolve around, first of all, are we sure that this is our legal responsibility? Have we consulted with them to make sure that that's with legal, to make sure it's our legal responsibility to repair that?
It's really a legal requirement, but I guess either Dave, Tyler, or Kirk, when you guys want to take this one and kind of come up and talk about the easements that we have in place?
So, when Holiday Inn built back in, like, '95, there was the storm and sewer manholes mains underneath their property. They had to be rerouted to accommodate the building of the hotel. So with that, the easements were obtained, and we have maintenance duties for those mains.
Thank you. On the financial end, you mentioned that this would have to come out of a general fund. Noting we did not have this within the budget for this fiscal year, would that then come out of our fund balance?
It wouldn't necessarily come out of our fund balance. It would come out of the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. You know, what's left would go into the fund balance. So there may be some that comes out of it. There may be some that goes into it. I think the way we did the budget is kind of holding off or putting some money back into the fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. So there really isn't a huge impact on the general fund balance for this project.
Thank you. Finally, one of the benefits of a competitive process is that we're able to make sure the vendors are licensed and insured properly. Are we sure that Picture Perfect Asphalt is licensed and insured properly to do this project and removing liability from the city?
Yes.
Fully licensed and insured?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? Anybody that would like to make the three separate motions? Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to waive the competitive bid process.
Support.
It's been motion and support. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Motion to award repairs to Picture Perfect Asphalt for $14,000.
Support.
Motion to support. Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion also passed unanimously. Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Motion to establish a budget for the parking lot repairs in the amount of $14,000 with funding by the general fund.
Support.
Motion to support. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Under G, Business Items, number two, City Manager Chapman.
Name, Mr. Mayor. Up next for Commission Considerations, a request to purchase EHS Insight Safety Software for the city's safety training program. This is a two-year contract. There are some funds set aside for this fiscal year within the safety budget, and there'll be some funds available for this for next year. It's a two-year contract. Essentially, what this is, is a software program that the Safety Committee has reviewed. Every employee will have an account. This will have a lot of different safety trainings available for them. We'll be able to kind of tailor the safety needs for the positions. At the end of the year, we'll be able to print off a report that shows our staff has gone through those safety training programs. Including the proposal, our modules attract the SCS sheets as well as all the training. So this is kind of our next step. We passed the safety policy a few meetings ago, and this is the training side of that program. So, we look for three motions. Motion to waive the competitive bid process. This one was reviewed. The committee did go through and review safety, or several different, safety training programs. This is one that stood out to them. Motion to approve the purchase, as well as motion authorize a budget amendment in the IT Fund software.
Thank you, City Manager. Anybody have any questions or comments on this particular item? Commissioner Habusta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similarly, I'm, again, concerned about our waiving the competitive bid process. Is the reason why we're waiving that, is the reason why administration has recommended waiving this? They're feeling this is a single-source vendor? Or is there a different reason?
Software typically is single-source. Really, if we wanted to, if we just did a one-year contract, we could have approved it administratively, but because it's a two-year contract, it puts us over the threshold to be able to do that. But, yeah, it's software typically is kind of sole source, just like Microsoft, any of those other programs. You typically review them internally and make a recommendation for what you feel is best to work for the organization. Like I said, there's been some work that's done by staff to review different products, and this is the one they kind of feel would satisfy our organization's requirements.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Who would like to make this motion? Commissioner Talentino, I know you like safety issues.
Yes, not a problem. Motion to waive the competitive bid process.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Talentino.
Motion to approve purchase of EHS Insight for the purchase price of $7,684.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Talentino.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion authorize a budget amendment to the IT Fund software license in the amount of $7,700 with support from the general fund and reduce the Safety Committee budget as described.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Finally, G, Business Items, number three, City Manager Chapman.
Name, Mr. Mayor. Up next for Commission Considerations is a request for a budget amendment of $19,800 from the Sioux-Seal Recreation Fund in order to upgrade and make some repairs to the Disc Golf Course. So, tonight with us, we have the two gentlemen that's making this request. Kyle and...
Ethan and Steven.
Ethan and Steven. I was gonna say Seth. I apologize for that. But they took this to the Parks and Rec Board. They've got some great plans lined up for the Disc Golf Course over by Sherman, or not Sherman Park, by...
Sioux-Seal.
Sioux-Seal, thank you. We do have a presentation that we can kind of go over real quick, and if the requesters want to come on up and kind of walk us through it a little bit. See if this thing works, Bonnie. Want to throw it up? Fingers crossed.
So, did the, you guys get a slide deck already?
We'll put it up on the screen here.
Oh, awesome. Here we go.
I guess I gotta plug it in, don't I, Bonnie?
So, it's not too much, just, I think, eight slides. They're sparse slides. They're not high charts. So, the first part is just kind of an overview of Disc Golf, if you're not aware, and what the benefits are and that kind of stuff for the city. And then the second part is going to be the improvements we're proposing, and then third is the costs. There we go.
There we go.
So, yeah, so that's it. Yeah, so, Stephen, you made these slides. Do you want to talk to Ethan?
Yeah, so, this is just a couple of slides to show that there is value in supporting Disc Golf as a growing sport and tourist attraction. All of these stats come from this app company called UDisc. That's like the main app everybody tracks their rounds on. And every year, they put together a bunch of data to kind of help out in cases like this to, you know, show that it's growing. So, this is just showing that the vast majority of courts are, or courses are in public parks and free to play. And we can go to the next. The top-left one is just showing the steady growth of the sport in terms of number of courses since 2019. And then on the right, you can see the participation. So they're counting how many rounds people are playing on the right there. And then at the very bottom, you can see 87% of their surveyed players are willing to travel 20 miles or more to Disc Golf; 53% plan to take a trip in 2025 specifically to Disc Golf; and 70% spent as much or more on equipment as in 2023. So this is last year's data. This, real quickly, is just a study that was done at Saginaw Valley and two other universities, surveying disc golfers basically to find out how much recreational value they feel they get from playing. I think the closest comparison is probably paying for a round of golf, which is usually like $50 to $100. They found an average of $70 is what people were reporting they felt they got out of playing a course. So, based on that figure, it's about 280 rounds that would have to be played on this course to equal the 19,000 that we're asking for. We can move on. This is just to show the main two things that we're looking to receive funding for. Number one is concrete pads. That's, you know, where you throw from. The concrete is really the gold standard. They last forever, easy to maintain. And then the basket on the right, that's an example of a permanent basket. So, they get dug into the ground and locked into place and can be removed if you need to as well. And then...
So, these are other changes we're gonna do in addition to the path and the basket. There'll be, sorry. So, there's another view where it can be removable if it's in the way of people. And then the middle one is the sign that we made. And so, the signs, I think that's fine. You can go to the next slide. I'll cover it there. So, the other things that we're asking is for the grass cutting because right now it's overgrown. So that's kind of an example of what's going on there. The white would be the pad, and then just trimming the grass around the outside. If you ever play real golf and you didn't have a little grass cut, it's kind of hard to find your ball. And then the next slide should be the... Yeah, so, so here's kind of the overview of the request. So, the top pink line there is where we are right now. So, there's no lawn maintenance. There's no tee pads. The baskets are in bad need of repair, and there's no signs. So, basically, unless you have this app that shows you where everything is, it's kind of unplayable. But people do it anyway. You can go on there and see the reviews, and it's like, you know, great promise, but, you know, needs some help. So, the improvements there, let's just skip to the costs. So, oops, so, yeah, so, we talked with Parks and Rec about the grass and have an agreement there, and we'll cut what they can, and it'll be fine. As far as the tee pads, we did do a competitive bid. We had two of them. So, they were pretty close to each other, but I think Darlington Concrete was the one that was a little lower. Baskets, we found very good baskets that a Hope Township in Lower Michigan purchased, and then they ended up not doing it. So, we're getting these great unused baskets at a much lower price, about 30%, 30%, 40% less. And as far as the signs, our Coast Guard friends have already funded that. We've got the design, and we're just finalizing the design on that. So, I think that's it. I think I just talked to the lower part. So, any questions?
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Thank you. I love this idea. Great presentation. How often would the grass need to be cut? I mean, on a golf course, they cut it almost...
No, just whenever they do with the rest of them out there. I think every couple of weeks or I'm not sure what we cut.
We estimated a minimum of every two weeks or so, if that's how frequent, because they already go through and mow the trails on the edge.
Okay.
So it's basically an expansion of what they're already doing. But it definitely doesn't need to be like a golf course. It just needs to be walkable and able to find your disc.
Okay, because that would be my only concern because I know, you know, Parks and Rec are pretty spread out, so...
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Habusta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, can you tell me what our current UDisc course rating is? You know, often?
I think it's 2.4 or 2.8 out of 5.
And what do you anticipate when you're done?
With these types of improvements, and the layout is not finalized, we're planning to work with Parks and Rec to make sure they're okay with, you know, the final, final layout. Because right now, a couple holes are missing, so we're trying to make a full 18. But typically, a course with signage, good baskets, and a good design in tee pads will average about a 4 out of 5. That's more or less, unless we do a bad job designing it.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. Clearly, the way that people identify a good course is by using UDisc, and I appreciate that. This has the potential to raise that rating. I do plan on supporting this, but, and I want you to know, but I'd be remiss not to say that, you know, as a community, we've developed a master recreation plan, capital improvement plan, and strategic plan, and a UDisc course isn't in there. And with that, I think there's other opportunities that we have put in those plans that we need to begin looking at, and we need to begin doing, whether that be the pickleball courts that several people have come to us. In fact, today, I looked at my Facebook history and saw a post where several of us were identified by an individual from the community asking that we get on board with other communities with that. Also, things like Malcolm Park, which many of us have been taking a hit on social media because of how it has declined. So, I think we need to be aware that there are other things as well that we need to begin to move forward on. I think this sets a good example of a way that we, as a community, we can embrace our recreation needs and move forward. And so I plan on supporting that, and I would encourage us to continue to move forward on other recreation needs as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Rubenstein.
I just have a question. In the Parks and Rec minutes, there was a comment about not wanting, the city not wanting the slabs on the hills. Does that mean there wouldn't be slabs in certain spots? Or just the holes would be nails? Okay.
Correct. I get a little muddy or something, but we'll work around it. Go through chips or something.
Specifically after the meeting, Levi was talking with us. Out back, me and Ethan, Kyle, had to call in remotely for the meeting. And he wants to come out and do a walkthrough with us and help strategize how we could utilize the hill because it is fun to throw down a hill, but without being intrusive in any way, so...
Cool. Thank you.
Anybody else? Tyler, did you have anything to say? Or you're just moral support? All right.
I can speak on the maintenance side of it a little bit.
Sure, sure. Thanks.
You know, this was a course put in by volunteers back in the 2000s. I don't know the exact year. There was an agreement back then with, then, I think, Richard Delmone to build this course. And then it just kind of faded away. So, I mean, that's how this all started. In talking with my staff, who have been around for that long, they did, when they mowed the hill, they would mow parts of the green where it was, made sense. And then it kind of got away. They had volunteers that came in and kind of took that over, and then that went away. So that's why there's been no real set maintenance plan for the course. So, when I talked with them, they think it's doable, you know, to do what they're asking.
Thank you. Commissioner Habusta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the maintenance plan, and you reminded me of one thing I wanted to ask. You mentioned, or they mentioned doing some of the maintenance as well as mowing. I guess the two-part question there would be, number one, through the Adopt a Park program, is the city covered from any liability of any injury that might happen to anyone doing that?
In doing this through the Adopt a Park, this would be like a case where we're gonna come back with an MOU.
Okay.
For this specific case.
Okay, and I guess maybe that's where my second question goes. Is there any sort of issue with them doing work that city workers might do as part of their job?
On this, as a volunteer basis for the Disc Golf Course, I don't see an issue, no.
Okay, thank you.
And that with the Adopt a Park programs?
Anybody else? All right. Is there a Commissioner that would like to make this motion? Commissioner Marble.
Motion to approve a budget amendment of $19,800 for the reconstruction of the Disc Golf Course at Sioux-Seal Recreation Area, fully funded by the SEAL Operating Fund.
Support.
Motion to support. Any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much for taking the initiative, and we look forward to seeing it. And we have a world-class Disc golfer in the back corner there, so... Yes.
Oh. Sorry. Where, is there a local place to buy Discs?
That's a good question. Anywhere local?
Yeah, the sports goods store has some, but not a lot.
Hopefully with the demand now, then somebody will pick it up. Good question.
I just have to say that I, this morning, I probably watched about 10, at least 10, videos on YouTube and whatever of it, and I'm very interested. I think I'm gonna pick it up. Looks like a fun sport. Yeah.
First, you gotta pick up a chainsaw and clean it up on there. All right, we'll move into Item H, which is City Manager Announcements and Updates. City Manager Chapman.
I just want a big one. If you haven't updated your, or created your Diligent account yet for your new Board Doc system, please make sure to do that. We're gonna be switching to that new system in a couple of weeks here, two, three weeks. So, make sure you have your account updated, so make sure you have your account updated, and then we'll do some training with the commission kind of once it's up and running there. So, you should have got an email from Diligent in the last few weeks. Check it out. Activate your account. If you didn't get it, let us know, and we'll resend it and double-check, so.
I resend it.
Robin resend site, so it should be at the top of your email box, so if you don't have it, let us know, and we will resend it, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Just figured this one out after 15 years.
I know.
Any questions for City Manager on his lengthy report? We'll go on into item I, which is matters presented by the public. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into item J, which is matters presented by the city commission. Commissioners? Commissioner Rubenstein.
This one is for City Manager Chapman. Do we have any sense of, I'm gonna ask a question and then make a comment. Do we have any sense of when the splash pad is going to be open? But I also just want to make a quick comment. I appreciate, I know a lot of people have been asking. The last two weeks of May, I think 50% of the days, the height didn't even touch 60, so I also think we all need to be patient as well while it gets consistently warm. But do we have a sense of when the splash pad is gonna?
Probably the next couple of weeks, next week or so. We just had a meeting with the new foundation director. The donations are gonna come in a little bit short, so I've been working with some of the staff members on assisting with that kind of gap to make sure that we have enough money kind of going through there. So, there was a conversation at the end of last summer about it, but I got an update from her recently on some of the donations that they've had pledged to them, and the way she kind of said it was just a little bit short. So we're figuring out a way of funding that gap to make sure the splash pad is open throughout the entire summer. So, they will more than likely, 99%, be something that comes in front of the commission the next meeting on the 16th to authorize a little bit different system for the splash pad. And I'll send you guys an update here, probably in a few days. I've got a couple of pieces of information that I'm still missing, and then once I get an update from staff, I'll send it out to you, and then we'll go from there. But, long story short, couple of weeks, when it's a little bit more consistently warm, too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer.
A lot of people have been asking when Music of the Park is gonna begin, and the season's starting just a little bit later this year than what we're used to, but that would be June 25th at Locks Park, so hope to see you all there.
Anybody else? Commissioner Habusta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo Commissioner Rubenstein's question there, and I think, I appreciate the answer, but I think it's important that we use the community work to open that as soon as possible. I know that there, certainly recreation, our recreation provides financial gaps. I understand the need to figure out where the funding is coming from for that, but I think, you know, that's a great resource for our community. And I know that, again, looking at my Facebook memories, last year, there was my daughter and I out there today on the park, so I think it's a great thing, and I appreciate the work that's being done to make sure that that gets open as soon as possible. The question I had is, I know we had a goal-setting plan, it got canceled. I'm wondering when we are rescheduling that for?
Yep, I got the email out to the consultant we're looking at for some summer dates. I, you know, we had it originally planned for a holiday, a federal holiday, that we were open, but that kind of had to get canceled out, so. Sioux Mean Summer's gonna be a little bit easier, so I'm getting some dates, and then I'll send it out to you all to see what your travel plans are. When we were trying to do it, kind of what I'd say during the school year, it was tough to find a date and a time that would work for all seven of the commissioners. It's definitely not something that we can do with, you know, six, five, or four of the commissioners, we need all seven of them. So, trying to pin down a date is kind of our next step here for the summertime. Like I said, we're waiting for the summertime to come around, because it'd be a little bit easier on traveling for the consultant, and then I know there's some leeway on schedules during the summertime.
Yes.
Yes, so, so that's where we're at with that right now, so.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Bauer.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.